East Hannover is northwest of us. It's confusing.
I'm directly next to it.
No, it's not even close.
So Vince Vidal.
Vince?
Yeah.
I'm so good. Yeah.
What's the thing?
Oh, yeah.
I got an announcement to you guys, like.
Yeah, yeah.
Department.
Yeah.
Each other, it's always like.
Oh, yeah, I know Vince.
This is how he did.
Yeah, it is, it is. He worked with us when he did law school. And.
Okay.
Yeah. And my dad was born right here in Quinix.
Oh, that is.
Oh, I almost said, huh?
Upstate?
Call made its order, so the flag's going to move aside. This meeting has been advertised as a regular business meeting as follows. Posting written notice on official bulletin boards at the federal school, upper elementary school and C D land schools. Electronic and recorded written notice of the broadened county times. Filing written notice of the township. Filing written notice with the members and the secretary of his body. Mailing written notice to each person who has requested copies of the regular meeting schedule. And through any other service, visiting compliance with the laws of the country.
Green?
Here.
Green later.
Green.
Name?
Here.
Mara?
Yeah.
Red?
Here.
Yeah. I guess Mr. Reddy and Piper publicly announced the award that Mrs. Guy recently received. You probably all know about it, it was on Facebook and also on the other websites. But I'm very proud of her accomplishment. The Burlington County Administrators Association, I think I said that right, have awarded her the 2026 Superintendent of the Year Award in recognition of her outstanding performance of her duties both in within our school system and within the county and actually the state. So much of what she's done has come down to affect both the county and the state. And I for one am very proud of her accomplishments and want to thank her for all that she has done for us and in particular for our students. And if you have any idea of some of the students who have graduated, come through our school system and graduated and some of the fantastic things that those young men and women are now doing. I'm very proud of them and of the people who made that possible. So Helen, I want to congratulate you. Thank you for all that you have done for this district and give us along the way. Thank you, congratulations.
Helen, executive session?
Uh, if you, so the hearings are postponed. Just don't need it for that. Um, it would just be if you have personnel, question.
And now a big questions.
Or hidden questions. Then I don't. Oh, I do have one thing. I do have one thing. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I'll make a note for executive session.
Okay.
Second.
It should only be, would be ten minutes.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Much better.
How do you know?
Go ahead.
Uh, we can walk now. I mean, if that's okay.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Much better.
All right, uh, any communications aboard?
No.
How about you?
All right, so it's my pleasure to present to all of you the proposed budget for the district for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. When you build a budget, you go through a series of things that you look for and you look at before you put your budget together and while you're putting your budget together, including what are your program goals for the district? Um, you look at a, we look at a lot of data. We look at our enrollment, our staffing needs, our program needs. Um, what fixed costs, costs are increasing and how much they're increasing. The history of our, of all of those things, the history of our enrollment, the history of our level staffing. And then we think about what expenditures do we anticipate for the year that we're building the budget for. We look at any special or unique cost drivers that might be conditions of that moment in time. We look at our different revenue sources and what we anticipate from those revenue sources. What we anticipate our revenue to be. What are our, what are our budget goals after we kind of synthesize all of that information? What is it that we want out of this budget? What will the tax impact be and what other considerations do we need to look at? And then I kind of developed the bottom line and that's sort of the, um, sequence that this presentation will go through as well. So our program goals for next year always is to improve student achievement. Um, we had a hard focus on mathematics for several years. We now have, um, kind of had, a few years ago, we had a hard focus on literacy. We made a shift to mathematics. Um, we're going back to literacy. We're kind of cycling through, but we're not going to abandon mathematics, of course. So we will be focusing on those two things. Uh, we want to make sure that we maintain our social emotional supports for kids and for families and all of those shared learning opportunities with kids and families that we've been doing that have been so popular and successful. We want to continue our after-school experiences for our students and our summer experiences for our students. And after-school and summer experiences are relatively new to the district. I would say really only within maybe the past five years. So that's something that took a while to get it up and running, so we definitely don't want to see that go. There's more goals. Oh, there we go. We want to, um, maintain and enhance the continuum of services that are available to our students in terms of not the core program, but the extra supports that some of our kids need. Um, tiered intervention in literacy and in mathematics. The rich learning experiences that we provide to all of our students, our behavior interventionist, behavior coach, our counselors, our move to learn program, including peace and pace um, for the staff members in the room that are familiar with what those are. Those are, are, basically they're components of the move to learn program for kids. Our world language program that we've had so much success with. Uh, we want to attract and retain highly qualified professional and support staff. We want to make sure that we maintain opportunities for our staff to grow onsite, offsite, and through the instructional coaching process. We want to ensure that all of our facilities are updated, safe and secure, and that they're in a position to support our current programs. And we want to ensure that our technology is updated and our information is secure. So, you know, when I talked about, we look at data, right? So here's some data that kind of walks you through our population growth in, since twenty-twenty-one. It is substantial. When I started here fourteen years ago, we weren't even breaking eleven hundred students. So in twenty-twenty-one, we are at eleven twenty-six, right? So pretty slow growth, pretty stable population. There were some ups and downs, um, but it always sort of landed back in that eleven hundred to twelve hundred range. Then in twenty-one, twenty-two, post-COVID, um, we saw a rapid increase. Um, and we went from eleven twenty-six to fourteen sixty this year, projected fifteen twenty-six next year. That's an increase of four hundred students, which is thirty-five percent. It's a lot. It's a, it's a whole school of kids. Um, you can see the breakdown between military and civilian kids. You know, I understand that there are, is some potential development that could be happening in town that could bring some more civilian kids our way. Um, I think we're, we're prepared for that. Um, and so I wouldn't be surprised to see this number increase going forward. Uh, but that's where we are now and that's the pattern we've been kind of following. And you can see, if you look at the ratio, the percentage of military to civilian kids, it's been that seventy-three, seventy-four to twenty-six, twenty-seven, four number of years. So why is enrollment growth important wealth? When we have more students, that affects the number of sections per grade, which affects the number of teachers we need to hire. Um, it also puts additional demands on our facilities. We need more rooms. Um, it puts more demand, and this is kind of a forgotten area at times, on our core personnel as well. Our nurses, our front office staff, our central office staff, our specialists, our custodial staff. We don't automatically add those positions when we get more kids like we do teachers. Um, but it def, they definitely feel it too. So we're always kind of monitoring that to make sure that it's, um, a need that we can continue to meet with the level of staffing that we have. And so far, uh, for the most part, we've been fine with that. But we definitely feel it. So what other considerations in terms of expenditures are we thinking about when we're building this budget? Well, I talked about the curricular focus on E L A, on the foundational reading strategies and the staff development that goes along with that. We've, um, actually jump-started some of that work through a DODA grant. It's been really successful so far. Um, but you know, we're just kind of touch, uh, scratching the top of the surface with what we're doing so far. So we want to keep that work going and get it, get the information to all of our staff so that it can be a systemic change. We're also going to have to begin to review our science program and science curriculum. It's been a number of years since we looked at that. Our science, um, progress was sort of interrupted by COVID. When we put all the materials away and we didn't allow kids to share anything for a while, right? So we need to get back to that. So that's coming up and I believe Mrs. Guy, our director of curriculum, has that on her agenda for next year. Uh, we want to maintain our personnel and our systems for strong information and physical security. We need to anticipate inflated costs for core services like transportation, related and extraordinary services for kids, out-of-district tuition, supplies, energy, insurance. All of those things are costing us more. I'm sure Mrs. Lerner could tell you the percentages on them, but it is significant. We want to maintain and improve our building facilities to meet the current needs. We have a, a small expansion of C D land in the works. That should be getting started imminently. We're going to talk about the bid opening that we did today.
It's a great expansion. It's awesome.
It's good. Well, in terms of numbers of classrooms. It's a net of two regular classrooms and then some smaller instructional spaces. And it is a nice, um, addition in terms of the.
Same gym.
The gym.
Sorry. I'm like, I'm going to be the cheerleader for it.
It's good. It'll be, it will make a big difference in terms of scheduling the building.
It will, or like.
And for community use as well.
I'm excited.
Um, we have found over the past couple of budget cycles that we've needed to increase our special education staff to meet the needs of an increasing number of students with significant needs. Um, like really significant needs. Nurses, one-on-one nurses, one-on-one aides, um, behavior services. Like really, kids are coming to us with, uh, needs that we used to see occasionally in the past. We're seeing it regularly now. Um, and that has resulted in more out-of-district placements and I have some data on that in just a couple of slides. So here's some, oh, this slide. Um, here's some of the history with special education. If you look at our spending in twenty-twenty-one, four point four, well, four point five million dollars, just about. In twenty-five, twenty-six, we're anticipating ten point four, almost million dollars. It's just in special education spending. Um, that is an increase of a hundred and thirty-one percent in that period of time. The thing about special ed spending is it's required. You know, it's not like nice to do or nice to have. It's required by I E P. And we have got to meet the needs of the students that come to us with those services in their I E Ps. Um, we went from a hundred and fifty-two special education students. Mrs. Velasic, our director of special services, is anticipating a minimum of three hundred and fifteen next year. We're at two eighty right now. She's got thirty who are being evaluated. Most will qualify and then we will also get additional students from early intervention and moving in. So looking at about three hundred and fifteen. And if you look at this last line, the out-of-district placements. An out-of-district placement for a student, tuition typically runs sixty-five, seventy-ish, thousand dollars. Transportation, another fifty. Um, and then if the student has a one-to-one aide, that ends up with, with benefits, ends up being about another sixty. And if there's a one-to-one nurse, that's about another hundred and twenty. Right? So one student out of district can be several hundred thousand dollars. We went from four kids who needed out-of-district services to twenty-three kids anticipated next year who need out-of-district services. That's pretty striking, right? And that's not because our staff is saying, place them out of district. We're doing everything we can to provide for kids in district. But there are that many kids that, whose needs just can't be met here, right? We'd love to keep them here, we just can't meet their needs here.
And to that point, in twenty-twenty-one, we probably had about four self-contained classrooms in district.
Good point. And now we have seven, eight?
Eight.
Eight. Um, so we are keeping a lot of kids, um, that in the past probably would have gone out of district. But the twenty-three whom we anticipate going out of district really need out-of-district placements. That's the right place for them with the right services and the right level of expertise. So I think looking at those numbers, it's easy to see how we got from four point four to ten point three pretty quickly. Um, I kind of talked about all of that as I went. And none of those numbers include any general education services. So when I talk about special ed, I'm not talking about counselors or mental health services or any of those things. Most of those are provided through the gen ed program. Um, we don't have counselors just for special education students. So just wanted to make that clear. Those are strictly special ed services. All right, so in terms of, so that's a little insight into what some of the costs are that are driving this budget. In terms of revenue, we've got three major sources of revenue. We've got impact aid and, um, no, no, I didn't want us to do that this time. Um, so i- in terms of impact aid, we had, we spent a couple of years getting one hundred percent of the money that was due to our school district through the impact aid program because the appropriations were really strong. This year, um, the, if you remember, Congress couldn't agree on a budget. So they agreed to have a continuing resolution, which basically held everything at the prior fiscal year level. No increases to anything. And because the demand for impact aid increased and the funding level stayed level, they had to prorate it. So rather than getting a hundred percent of our money, we're getting about ninety-four percent of our money this year. We're actually fortunate. We won't see a net loss of funds, even though it's prorated down to ninety-four percent because out for a couple of reasons. Number one, our enrollment is growing, right? So more kids qualifies us for more funding. And our attendance is improving. So you don't get funded based on how many kids you have enrolled. You get funded on how many kids show up each day. They actually track attendance and that is a multiplying factor in the formula. Um, in terms of state aid, we should be close to our full funding level at this point in time. I don't anticipate, other than enrollment growth, that we'll get much additional state aid. And in fact, I would recommend keeping, keeping a close eye on the state aid um, as the demographics of the township, you know, you hear a lot of rumors. I'm not sure exactly what's true. I know there's a development potentially going in. I'm hearing it might be some high-priced houses. That changes the demographic of the town and it changes the amount of money, um, that the school district qualifies for in terms of funding. So just keep a close eye on that. Don't assume, I guess, of the messages, don't assume that that funding, that state aid will always be there because that can, that makes it minimal. And then in terms of the local tax levy, our strategy has always been to minimize the impact on the taxpayer while maintaining proportionality and fair share. Why is that so important? Well, there is aid that we qualify for. It's not yet part of the state law, but I believe it's coming. Um, but it is part of, um, federal law, uh, in terms of whether or not we qualify for certain pots of money within the impact aid program. The pot is called B two. If you maintain your local fair share and you control your spending appropriately, you can qualify and you have more than thirty percent of your students enrolled that are federally connected kids, you can qualify for extra money. So we have off and on qualified for that over the years. Um, we qualified the last three years. This coming year, we're held harmless. So we didn't qualify, but we are being held harmless, uh, which means we can't lose all of it at one time, basically. In addition to the typical, uh, expenditures and revenues considerations that every district goes through when they go to budget, we know that we need to maintain reserve for our facility's needs. I don't know if everyone knows this, but the District of North Hannover carries no debt. We are one of, I don't know how many districts in the state, but not many, that do not carry any debt. And we certainly are probably the only district that has facilities that look like this, that don't carry any debt. Most districts, when they need to do construction, renovation, additions, they have to float a bond. The community has to vote yes. Um, when the community votes yes, the district is allowed to take on debt in order to do that work. We have not done that here. We have paid for all of our projects by budgeting appropriately with our impact aid. So we always want to maintain impact aid in reserve for any future facilities needs so that we can maintain that long history of no debt. We also always make sure that we maintain enough reserve to operate. If there is no federal budget, if there is no funding released, um, that we have enough to fund ourselves until Congress gets its act together and, and gets through the appropriations process. I talked a little bit about B two. I'd like to see the district continue to qualify at least off and on for B two and not get, not stray too far away from the conditions that qualify it for that money. It is significant money. I think this year we've got about two million dollars in B two funding. Um, and then of course, it's only responsible to pursue any other alternative or special revenue that's available to the district, right? If it's available, we should go after it and we have been. Um, there's Department of Defense impact aid that we lobby hard for. There is severe disability special ed impact aid that there's a tedious application process for that Mrs. Lerner goes through with Mrs. Velasic every year. Um, but it's worth it and we do qualify for some funding there. And then of course, any available competitive grants that I have spoken at length about in the past. So let's look at some of our revenue history, just so you get an idea of what this all looks like, kind of side by side. There's the operating budget twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-five, twenty-six. It's gone up forty-six percent in that amount of time. Population's gone up thirty-six percent, so it's not that shocking that it's gone up that much. In twenty-one, twenty-two, we received eleven point one million dollars in impact aid. I'm estimating very conservatively seventeen million for next year. Um, I think when all is said and done, it will be higher than that, but, uh, I think that's a safe estimate. State aid has gone from twelve point two to twenty-one point five in that amount of time. And the tax levy has gone from three point two to three point five in that amount of time. So we've seen an increase in our budget of forty-six percent, an increase in impact aid of fifty-three percent, an increase in state aid of seventy-five percent, and an increase in the tax levy of almost nine percent. And to convert that to dollars, because I think, you know, percentages are one thing, but I think, you know, how much money is that in terms of like the tax levy? Um, that means we increased the tax levy in twenty-two, twenty-three, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We had no increase in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, sixty-seven thousand dollars, and twenty-five, twenty-six, sixty-eight thousand dollars. And, you know, just for a little perspective, sixty, going up by sixty-eight thousand dollars buys us about half a teacher. So thankfully, we've been very fortunate that our other revenue sources have been increasing because there's no way we could have sustained our programs and, and our taxpayers couldn't. There's just no way. Our tax, tax levy is such a small part of our operating budget. Um, without those other revenues increasing, we could not have done the work that we've been doing. Okay, so just to take a look at that from another perspective. Our operating budget from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-five, twenty-six has increased ten point nine million dollars. Our taxpayers funded two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of that ten point nine million. That means two point six percent of that increase was absorbed by the taxpayers and ninety-seven point four percent of it was absorbed by state aid and impact aid. It's not a bad deal. So what are our budget goals? Well, the first, uh, one is to meet our program goals, right? Because that's why we're here. Um, if we weren't meeting our program goals, we really don't have much reason to exist as an organization. Um, number two is to maintain impact aid in reserve to adjust and respond to any volatility. You know, I don't, I don't think the next couple of years are going to be easy budget years federally. Um, I don't know what will happen in the state, but there'll be a change in leadership in the state. So things could be different there too. Um, so I think having that money in impact aid is important. Uh, I think we, uh, we will strive to maintain a tax effort to show that the, the taxpayers of North Hannover are contributing to this process with a minimum impact on the taxpayer. It's kind of like a delicate balance there. Um, we'll increase staff as we need to to meet the increased enrollment or the increased needs. We'll continue, uh, the strong commitment. Those of you who have worked with me for a long time know I have a very, very strong commitment to professional learning and student support. Let's see that continue. Um, and so with those five goals, this is where we spend our money. Between classroom instruction and supplies and special education, that's forty-six percent of our budget. Um, and then we have transportation, nine percent, benefits are sixteen percent. People support services, that's all of our counselors and Amy knows exactly who goes in that category, but that's eight and a half percent of our budget. That's still student facing. Capital outlay is only one percent of what we do and district and school administration is five percent. And on this chart, you can, it's kind of a reiteration of what you just saw, but it looks at it over a couple of years. You can see that the line, this blue line is steadily rising. That's the cost of classroom instruction and supplies. Um, and then the light blue is special education. You can also see that steadily climbing, benefits steadily climbing. Um, and then the other ones are, um, not climbing quite as much. Some of them are actually involved. Capital outlay has gone down. Transportation is slowly inching up, a little slower than, uh, some of the other categories. So in summary, um, just, this just shows you the last three years. This is next year on the far right. Um, we are budgeting twenty-one point five million dollars in state aid, nine point one million dollars in impact aid. That's how much we plan to put into the operating budget. Um, additional revenue, five hundred and forty-four thousand, local tax levy, three point five thousand. The difference between three point four three, that's the tax levy now, and three point five, that's the anticipated tax levy for next year, that's two percent. That's the sixty-eight thousand dollar number. Um, and this is what that equates to in terms of a tax rate. And all of those together fund thirty-four million, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar budget. What does that look like for the average home? The average assessed home in the town is three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. That equates to a fifty-seven dollar tax increase for that home. If your home is assessed less, it's a lower tax increase. If it's assessed higher. If it's assessed higher, it's a higher tax increase. What does two percent really mean? I kind of went over this earlier. You know, two percent in a district that has a giant tax levy is a lot of money. Two percent in a district like ours with a small tax levy is not a lot of money, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. So that represents three per, three point eight percent of the increase from twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, which means that ninety-six point two percent of the remainder of the increase is being funded by other revenue sources, mainly state and federal aid. So how do we maintain and increase other revenues? Well, we have that continuous presence in Washington. It really makes a difference. We maintain our voice and our leadership in NAFIS and NESA and other international organizations. We continue our grant writing effort. We have a grant pending right now. These are the ones that you've heard of before, these first couple. But this one right here is pending. It's HELLO Two, it's the World Language Grant Two. It's one point two five million dollars. We don't have the word that we've been approved for it yet, but they are interested in our proposal and have scheduled a meeting with us to discuss it, which is, if it follows the same pattern as previous years, a very good sign. So hopefully that, we'll receive that funding. Preschool grant is still intact. E S A, E S E A, that's our Title One, Title Two, Title Four. That money is not all going to be intact likely. Title One will probably be okay, not sure about the others. So that's something to keep an eye on. There could be reductions to that money. That's federal money that is within the Department of Education and is receiving a lot of scrutiny right now. And then we always are pursuing shared services. Rather than hiring a Director of Technology, we share with Northern. And that has saved us quite a bit of money, plus gives a lot of expertise, so partnerships like that. This is our Impact Aid Reserve. I keep talking about how we need to keep money in the Impact Aid Reserve. This is what it looks like right now in the July twenty twenty-four audit. Forty-five point five million dollars were in there. Forty-four point seven of that was in regular Impact Aid Reserve. Seven hundred and sixty-four thousand was in Impact Aid capital reserve. That means it can only be used for capital. Regular reserve means it can be used for any need the district has. The CB-LAM construction project is estimated at seventeen million dollars, so that will come out of the forty-four. We don't have any money encumbered for twenty-four, twenty-five. And then if we always maintain and we don't spend the amount of money that we're funding our operating budget with, so right now, we're funding our operating budget with nine point one million dollars in Impact Aid. If we always maintain at least that amount in reserve, that leaves an uncommitted Impact Aid Reserve of eighteen point six million dollars. So that's what would be available for future capital projects, emergencies, that sort of thing. Bottom line, all of our programs are intact, all of our staff is intact. Impact Aid funding has kept pace with our population. We'll see an increase, I think, next year due to B2 Hold Harmless. State aid is making up four years where we were frozen, but I think everybody needs to keep an eye on that state aid. I'm sure Mrs. Lerner will do a great job of that. The increases in state aid are flattening out. The local levy is minimal. It's the two percent, sixty-eight thousand dollars, two point six percent of the total budget increase. And the enrollment growth, inflation, and special education are really our main cost drivers. They're balanced luckily by increased revenue. And we are taking advantage of other revenue sources like grant opportunities, and we're maintaining adequate reserve for any volatility, particularly at the federal level. Bottom, bottom line, we're in a really strong financial position. This district has been in a strong financial position probably for the, well, it's always been in a relatively strong one, but a very strong one for the past five or six years. And I think going forward, we're set up for stability. Does anybody have any questions for me? Yes?
These special grants, for instance, this HELLO Two grant that you just mentioned?
Yes.
My understanding is that those are specific amounts for these grants?
Yes.
Once they're spent?
Yes.
The grant goes away. Are we anticipating continuing those programs to regular funding?
Yeah, so when you write one of the grants for DODIA particularly, you have to include a sustainability plan. And what our sustainability plan always says is if they're meaningful and successful parts of the grant, we will maintain them. We may not maintain the program exactly as it's written in the grant because not every planned activity produces the results that we thought it would, right? So we're not going to continue to do things that aren't working. I guess "in other words" is an easy way of saying it. But the parts of the grants that are working, if we can continue to fund them, we will. And usually, we can do that through attrition and through other programs ending. There's not usually a net increase in spending in order to do that, at least there hasn't been so far.
Thank you.
Yes?
So the DOD Special Impact Aid or like the Special Severe?
Yeah, Severe Disabilities.
Those are, those are separate of the general Impact Aid?
Yeah.
Or they're not in, like, it's not like part of the ninety-four percent you were talking about, like, so, okay.
No, the general, it's, in general Impact Aid, you get about eleven hundred dollars per special education student. That's not going very far.
Right.
Right, so if you have kids, what, you get all the, you get the regular Impact Aid as well, plus eleven hundred dollars extra for a special education student. But still, the needs of, of our kids is, exceeds eleven hundred dollars. So for kids who are very, very needy, you can apply, as long as they're not being funded with IDEA funds, which are other federal funds. You can apply for, it's kind of the equivalent of the state's extraordinary aid, if you've ever heard of that. You can apply. So if a kid, if a student has a one-on-one nurse, that's a very special service. We can apply and we get some of that money back.
So then you have the criteria of what you can use, the special Impact Aid? Or, or not criteria, but like you can't just take that and put it to something?
No, it's a reimbursement. You have to already have spent the money.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then Amy has to get all her receipts together, which is really literally what the process looks like. And she has to table them all.
It had to be on our Impact Aid application.
I've never heard of that.
And it would cost more than the average.
So it's a big process.
I think there's a dollar amount they have to cost for them. So they had to be around two or fifteen, and they have to cost more. It's outlined every year. It's either three times the cost per pupil or the five times the national cost per pupil. There's a different amount based on their district.
It's a lot.
It's, it's a really complicated process, and I give a lot of credit to Amy because there are a lot of districts across the country that don't even apply because it's that complicated. Right, but she's got it down.
I can just say, coming from my, where I live, and seeing the, a lot of budget impacts in my own home district and seeing them trying to, you know, not lose staff and not lose programming, and I'm in a tiny district, the fact, you know, it is, it's reassuring to,
Yeah.
to, you know, know from a staff perspective that we're in a, you know, in a good place.
We, we really, in my opinion, we are not in the position that any of our neighboring districts are in. It's very different.
We're non-neighboring.
We're non-neighboring, yeah.
Jones House, not Jones, it's on Jersey.
We're, we're in a good position. Any other questions? Yes?
I'm hearing the big increases in number of out-of-district places.
Yes.
I'm sure some of that is due to changes of the requirements that have come across that are not being required for these students. And probably some of it due to the number of students moving into the district who require these special programs. Are they able to obtain additional funding to the state or anywhere else to compensate for this?
So yes, those are the students, the out-of-district students often qualify for that money that serves students with severe disabilities. And also, the state has a pot of money called extraordinary aid, who also, a lot of the kids that are being served out of district have extraordinary services, so they qualify for some extraordinary aid. We don't get all of it back, but we get some of it back. And we pursue every option that we have. And in terms of kids moving in, so yes, sometimes kids move in and we can't serve them here. But other times, we, we, they start here with us and we can serve them for a little while. But as they get bigger, sometimes their needs, sometimes their needs diminish as they grow. Sometimes they intensify as they grow. And so the students whose needs intensify as they grow, they're the ones that, that sometimes end up have, needing an out-of-district placement. That we, they just need a level of specialization and support that we don't have in a regular public school. That's why out-of-district placements exist, because there is a population of students that do have that level of need. And that's why they're expensive, because they're very specialized. Yes?
This is kind of a low-level question. I know some parents of out-of-district students transport their own students, and others are transported by school vehicles of some sort. Which seems to be the most financially efficient for us?
I mean, I, I.
Or is that normally a?
Well, it, it, it always varies. However, in general, if you want me to speak in really general terms, parent transportation tends to cost less because there are caps placed on parent transportation. When you transport with a bus company, now, if you can share a bus with six kids going to the same place, it becomes more efficient. But if you're, if you need to put one or two kids on a bus that's going sixty miles, it's an expensive route, can be a hundred thousand dollars.
Can we share bus, buses with other districts?
We do.
Hopefully.
Yep, if there's room on the bus, but this pattern is not unique to us. Other districts are sending more kids out of district as well. So buses are, the Amy's finding buses are full. We even get calls from other districts saying, hey, you have a student going to the Lark School. Can we put a student on your bus? And oftentimes, the bus is full. Any other questions? Yes?
Other question, I know the answer, so I'm going to clarify.
Yes.
I got a couple of calls yesterday, people in panic about the budget. I guess they were reading some stuff online, I was a little sleepy. So they were, they were under the impression that the tax levy was going up three point five million dollars.
No, that's the total tax levy.
Yes, that's the total tax levy. So it's going up two percent. It's gone basically from like three point four four.
To three point five. Yes, it's going up sixty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and six cents or something.
And for an average home.
For fifty-seven dollars. Yeah, I think that the information online was posted as a hypothetical, but I don't know that everybody read it that way.
Right, now the whole, the whole tax levy.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was the whole tax levy. But no, that, the, it's only a sixty-eight thousand dollar increase from last year.
Amy, you have bank capital, a million dollars. If you wanted to, you could, but I would recommend not to.
Yeah, we haven't, and that's a really important point. Like, we really haven't used hardly any of our bank cap. It's fallen away. So the, the board had, and that's, you know, speaks to the responsibility, the fiscal responsibility of the districts and the board. We've, we've probably all told, it's been over a million dollars that we could have levied and didn't.
Right. Since you were, you just have like that help from the labor, or momentary, you can qualify for those over here because the costs are going up so much. They allow boards to raise taxes more than two percent without asking taxpayers to use special circumstances. You've qualified for all these additional ways you can raise taxes.
But we haven't done it.
And if, and if you don't use those, so you'll see on our motion where you qualified for two this year, and it specifically says we're not using them, it goes into what's called bank cap. You have three years to use those funds if you are in a book. And gives you the ability to continue to raise taxes more than two percent for a three-year period. You have not done that.
And it's interesting, you know, when you talk about how we're in a different position in a lot of districts, there are other districts that have used every penny of bank cap. And they're getting waivers to go above the two percent anyway. Like, I read, what was that, was it Lacy Township, I think I read about? Go up fifteen percent, you know, and, and that's, and, and still cutting surfaces. Yes. So, you know, very, very fortunately, with very astute and conservative budgeting, I mean, we could budget every penny of Impact Aid every year, but we don't, right? So, and the reason we don't budget every penny is so that if we have a facility need, it doesn't bankrupt the district. If we have a special ed move in, that's when you have those motions on the agenda to transfer money from reserve into the operating budget. That's why we don't. And if Congress can't agree for a year or more on a budget, we can still function. Nobody gets laid off, programs don't go away. So we're in a good position. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Take care of that later.
Any other questions on the budget? We've got a motion to approve budgets, six point one, and six point two, six three, and six four.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Number seven, public comment on the agenda items. Number eight, personnel, motion to approve following personnel actions based on recognition of superintendent.
Yeah, it's everyone.
All the way to eight point twelve, six.
Mr. Green? Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes. Number nine, financial, motion to approve the following financial items based on recognition of superintendent. Nine point one, and three, the addendum at nine point four.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes. And then travel, motion to approve the following travel items based on recognition of superintendent. This is the board.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes. Number eleven, we're going to move down to eleven point three, we're at table one, one, seven, eight, eight. And one more, six, two.
I would, just because it puts them outside of the.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to table those until that's made. Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow? And Mr. Redd?
Yes. I can circle back, number eleven, other business, motion to approve the following other business items based on recognition of superintendent. Got eleven point one, and eleven point five, second.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes. Four to the metaphor.
So not too much new to report. I talked about some of this during the budget presentation. We're still awaiting FY twenty-six appropriations. Whenever they appropriate for FY twenty-six, you're using the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. So that's something to keep an eye on. The president released his skinny version of his budget, which is like the bare bones. Doesn't have a lot of detail in it, but it does reduce the Department of Ed by fifteen percent. NAFIS is not anticipating that the Office of Impact Aid will be consolidated or eliminated at this moment in time. I'd like to think that's due to our relentless advocacy and the cultivation of bipartisan support for the Impact Aid program. It seems to be safe right now. Aside from that, locally, we have NJSLA testing happening right now. All is going very well. Seems to have been smooth. I, Mrs. Warrick's in the audience, I think it's smooth, right? I haven't heard it differently. This week, we are highlighting Teacher Appreciation Week, and I think today was School Nurses Day.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's this week, let's just say this week. It's this week, let's just say this week.
I know Dr. Pyer is bringing flowers for nurses tomorrow.
Okay. And then we round out the week with Military Spouse Appreciation Day. So a lot of our staff fall in those categories, teacher, nurse and military spouse. I think we've got maybe about forty staff members who are military spouses. I'd just like to say, you know, I, I think we all know this, but it's still nice to say it. Our teachers and our nurses here are outstanding. Our military spouses contribute a lot to our district for the time that they get to spend with us. We're really, really fortunate in that regard. I can't think of a better group of teachers or nurses. I, I love our nurses. I never want to be one, that's why I think they're really special. Really fortunate to work with the folks who work here. It's really an honor to work with them every day. And that includes our support staff and our administrative support and administrative staff as well. But since it's Teacher Appreciation Week, I wanted to mention that. So they have a lot of celebrating going on in the buildings and special things that are happening. A little bit different in each building, but some nice things are happening for them. Later this month, some of our students will be representing the district at the Parade of Reeds. Our choir will be singing for the event as well. This is an annual tradition. It's a really nice tradition, a really nice event. And it's for Memorial Day, remember, it's over on J B M D L. So that's very exciting. There's an essay contest. I don't know what students won the contest yet. I did get to read the essays, but I, there's no names associated with them when you read them. So I'll, I'll announce the winners once we know those and who those students are. And they will read their essays at the event over on the installation. Our spring fairs are coming up. Our buildings are open for parents to visit with their kids if they'd like to see some of the work that students do on a daily basis. Some of the teachers set up like actual classroom activities, they put student work samples out. Our art and music teachers have displays and vignettes and performances that go on during that time. So for spring fairs, CB-LAM I believe is May twenty-first, Endeavor is May twenty-eighth, and U E S is June fifteenth. And then I know our preschool someone special day is May eighth at CB-LAM, but I don't know the date at Endeavor, does it?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow, okay, all right. All right, it's tomorrow.
I highly recommend coming to one of them and just watching these little kids.
Very cute.
Sing on stage. When we do, when we do our rehearsals, sometimes we're like, oh no, we get so worried. And then the day of, I don't know at Endeavor, but CB, like, we're like, they were just, I mean, they're beyond cute, but they just, they're amazing. They're so good.
They're adorable.
It's just, and it's quick, you know, we keep it simple, but they're just so proud of themselves.
Diane, what, what time is it tomorrow at Endeavor?
It's so adorable.
You know what, I'm sorry, I have to check.
It's one of our pre-classes.
I, I've been asked that question three times today, each time I had to check.
They have, you guys have two sessions?
We have two sessions and I want to say the first session is at, oh, here we go. Nine fifteen is the first session and ten thirty is the second.
Thank you, and CB-LAM's time?
Nine fif, we tell the parents nine, but we start about nine fifteen. I don't know about Endeavor for spring fair, but I know at Lamb, at least in preschool, because I have to play preschool. If you come, like, we're doing, making it kind of like an art show for the first time this year. We've all, we've collect, kept something from each month to, so I'm actually, you know, looking forward to the kids coming. Like, they don't even know that we have all this art that we've kept and, you know, it's not hanging up yet, so they're gonna come in and it'll be like an explosion of art.
It's a nice way to highlight our pre-k program. We have over three hundred preschool students in this district, so it's a big part of our program.
It really is, we're just so fun to watch them and we just, we don't realize it, I think, until you see them up there, like, how, how, I think I saw a cat in the bathroom, like, how well we've prepared them, but then they just, they just, they're just so awesome. Can't even say, I'm saying, you have to come, so now you have to come. I think the parents really get to see how much they've grown throughout the entire year as well. Because, even the three-year-olds, like, you would think, the little ones that, you know, sometimes they come, they come, they're so, they're so young, but they, the independence they gain pretty quickly. And some of them, you know, they get up there and they, they, they freeze, but then all of a sudden, like, they're friends, they help each other. They're just so cute.
We have an amazing preschool staff, that's a great focus. On staff, that's my report.
Any old business, new business? Public comment? And motion to adjourn? Seven.